Welcome everyone to the
Fresh Vegetables.
Monday, April 9th, 2012, meeting of the Bradleboro Planning Commission. Tonight's meeting is a joint board meeting with the Finance Committee. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Quick agenda review is that we will decide our usual business. We'll have our joint meeting with the Finance Committee and that will include our dialogue, but also we'll discuss the Municipal Facilities and Services Chapter of the Town Plan. And then after that, we'll discuss the Economic Development Chapter of the Town Plan. And then we'll go grocery shopping and so we have to get out here at a reasonable time. Everybody doesn't have to go shopping.
For some of us, it's way more important than others.
Is that where they're site visit here?
Yeah, right next to the bananas.
You did encourage site visits rather than you first came.
Yeah, that's exactly what I had in mind.
Right, right.
So the price of food is on the agenda?
Sooner or later, yeah.
So, next item is to approve the minutes of March 26th, 2012, our last meeting. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from March 26th.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? I actually have one thing. Under the, on page two, the first bullet point at the top says Mr. Goodemout said it has an impaired waterway. I just, I can't remember, is it actually impaired, the Crosby Brook, or is it on the next to impaired list?
No, it's impaired.
It's impaired with sediment, right?
Yeah, right. The way they say-
The next list is impaired with stormwater.
Right. It's on the 303 parentheses D list.
303D, okay. That's the room they had detention in in my high school.
Is that, so would you identify that waterway in the minutes then?
I think we should say that it's, that instead of just, it said it has an impaired waterway, we should-
Say where it is?
Put words in your mouth and say-
I'd like to say that-
The Crosby Brook is-
The Crosby Brook is an impaired waterway.
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Next item is announcements. I have one and everybody got a copy of the brochure for this. It's the River Science Conference of Living with Vermont's Rivers, which is Wednesday, May 16th, 2012. I don't know if anybody that's visiting or jointly meeting with us needs something about that, but it's, there's a whole schedule for the day. It's a no-charge conference. Sounds really good. For us, it's sort of poignant because we're, we have a mandate in the town plan to undertake pollute erosion once again, so.
Did you mean poignant or closing the door, bar the door after the horse was left?
That would be poignant too, I think. So I think it's poignant. That's, I'm going with that.
Could even go for nostalgic.
Touching.
To keep with that whole sixty cent.
So that's an announcement. It's at the Capital Plaza in Montpelier, and no charge. Any other announcements?
Sue, do we need to sign up for that through you?
Nope, you can do it on your own. It's a free conference.
There was another one in April, April 20th?
Yeah.
Yep.
With planners and-
Oh, planners.
It's also about the river, too.
I thought I forwarded that to everybody. It's at the Vermont Law School.
Legal ramifications of flood control. I'm gonna go to that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Are there some people who are, I think there's at least a little bit of interest in West Bradleboro, whether it be carpooling or whatever.
Well, I'm gonna, it's a couple with me if you like.
If people wanted to contact the office?
Yeah, go ahead and do that, Michael. Just give us a quick email or something and we'll try and figure it out. Try and let us know how many West Bradleboro people might be up for it.
And who?
Where did you say that was?
It's in Montpelier, yeah. Did you get a copy, Joe? I hope you have a copy right there.
I got this one, yeah. I just didn't see, I don't see anything here for the one on the 20th.
Oh, the one on the 20th is at Vermont Law School.
That's in Ryleton. April.
April.
Yeah, kind of. I was gonna say you could stay over, but it's a long time, so. Okay, no other announcements, then. Any other business?
Tim. Oh, he's public comment.
And it's time for a public comment. One of the finest, and I just want to remind the public that there's no haranguing. Still wanna talk? No, please stand and identify yourself.
Thank you.
Fire away.
Mr. Public. Yes. Mr. Public, I did a little bit of, to, to, what, what, Tim Krupf, resident of Western Avenue, a business in, a business in West Pratt. Of the last few days or weeks, or certainly when I came back, I noticed that the property at Solar Hill on Western Avenue has the beginnings of some structure going up, which apparently is for a solar array. And at first, I didn't know what it was for. And I inquired of the planning office whether the, you know, what it was and was there a permit for it. And the conversation then moved on to the fact that Act 248 permits, which are the Public Service Board permits, which you have to get when you're putting in electricity-related or public service type installations, apparently, in the case of net meter projects where you connect to the grid, doesn't require local review. I'm a little bit at sea here, because I haven't read that 248 permits in detail, sorry, the procedure in detail. I don't know to what degree the Public Service Board also reviews those types of developments. Certainly in this town, in the last 12 months, the DRB has reviewed one development, none of this nature, but we've got to cogeneration, which is happening, a Sosomo's, a Sarosomo's plant down where the solar mills are. But what transpired in conversation in my brief research is that it would appear that if you have, wish to put up solar arrays or windmills or something of that nature that is not connected to the grid, you're obliged to come under, come before the local boards of Bradleboro and get permission for it. If you are connected to the grid under an Act 248 permit, it would appear, and I'm not totally sure about this, that you don't have to get local permits. This seems somewhat anachronistic to me. So I thought that it, an opportune time as we were rewriting the town plan, that perhaps some section of the town plan, either of a land use development or under energy, addresses this in some shape, form, or another. I just did a little memo. I mean, don't misunderstand me, I'm all in favor of alternative energy, solar panels, and the use of renewable resources, and we should encourage that to the nth degree. However, I think it should have some form of controls and that there should be some standards that are set through local zoning and site plan review to govern and control how these developments occur. In particular, in the case of Solar Hill, it's my understanding that none of the neobutters, you know, knew that it was coming. It just started to appear. It would appear that maybe not, not even notice to the town was given, although I'm not sure about that. To me, the very basics of normal site plan review, you know, doing up the impact on the character of the neighborhood, what kind of screening there is, will there be glare produced, how tall is it gonna be, how far back off the road, or what setbacks are involved, what is the size of the project in relation to the land, I thought we should have some basic guidelines and controls of this type of development. And I do see it as land development. Certainly, in my view, you know, if it's out in the country on a farm and it's rural and it's in a, you know, 10, 20, 30, 50 acre plot, I think it's probably, doesn't have that much impact. But when it's right downtown on a major thoroughfare or on a, or on a, in a residential area, then I think it's only reasonable that it comes under some kind of site plan review. So this little memo was really just encouraging the Planning Commission at some point, and the Planning Department at some point, to take a look at how we might, I hesitate to use the word control, but just manage these situations. It seems that if I wanted to put a windmill up outside my house on Western Avenue, I could do it. And as long as I'm connecting to the grid, I can do it. If I don't connect it to the grid, then I can't do it without coming to the, before the DRB apply for it. That seems to be somewhat odd. I might just put a windmill up for the following year.
Actually, I don't think, you could do a solar panel, but maybe not a windmill.
Well, you know, I'm exaggerating.
No.
So do you know, so you know the particulars of the Act, right? Maybe we could get a little, while you're, while you're up about this, Tim, maybe Brian or Sue could light this a little bit about-
Even if, I don't know what, I mean, someone could have said to me, well, it's Act 248, that's the end of it. You know, a bit like Act 250, that's the end of it. Well, we have local Act 250. I mean, there should be some vehicle, and if we don't have a vehicle, we should find a vehicle for, for controlling this in, in denser, developed areas of the town, in my opinion. I mean, if everybody disagrees, yeah, fine, but.
Gary?
Yes, Liz.
I'd like to agree, but also add, I think we talked about this when we were discussing the energy chapter, that we add biofuels to the, to your categories, and also think about noise and general environmental impact as well.
Yeah, I don't disagree with, I mean, I would leave it for the board to flesh it out. I just wrote down a set of thoughts this afternoon, just to give something to somebody to-
Right.
To think about. I think, you know, I'm not trying to solve the problems or, you know, say it should be, you know, this high, this low, this right, this left, but-
Just call it out.
Just, I'm just calling, I'm calling it out, because I think that the board should spend some time thinking about the issues that are involved.
Okay. And is there, in Act 248, are there site plan reviews that happen, or are there anything provisions for that sort of thing?
My understanding is that under the Act 248 permit process, the applicant, first of all, the applicant needs to notify the regional planning commission of, in the area, and the local municipality that they've submitted an application to-
At the planners.
An application to Act 248.
Because we have gotten one before, right?
We have. We didn't get one in this instance.
No.
And the only thing I can surmise is that it's an out-of-town, it's an out-of-state contractor that has this.
It's not-
No?
It's Gary McCarthur from Marlboro.
Is it Dan McCarter?
Yeah. Gary.
Gary?
Yeah.
Ah, okay. Well, that makes things somewhat easier and then somewhat fun. We thought it was somebody out of Massachusetts, but, okay.
Well, the sign on the front lawn says Gary McCarthur.
I think it's a firm out of Mass that Brian's been speaking to, though.
Yeah.
Not the future potential contractors.
Delta Energy or something, anyway.
Well, that's Bob's company. Bob Johnson's, Delta Energy, so they're, they're partially in Guilford.
It did, it did occur to me that it might have been, yeah, okay. All right. So anyway, the process is supposed to be, the applicant files a copy of their permit application, or at least notifies the regional planning commission and the town where the development is taking place, that they've filed for a 248 permit. I'm not sure, I'm not totally clear on all the particulars that the 248 process reviews. My understanding is that, in fact, it's, it's pretty perfunctory, that it's administratively approved by the Public Service Department. Not, it's not subject to a meeting, or it's not warned, or anything like that. The purpose of notifying the regional planning commission and the town is that if we've got comments that we'd like to make on the, on the application, then we can forward those to the Public Service Department for consideration. I don't know to what extent they take into account things such as the impacts that Tim and Liz have mentioned. I think it's more or less regarded as an as-of right, and the key, the key issues are that there's an agreement between the utility that has the monopoly on buying or selling power in the area. So part of it is that CVPS in this instance would have to agree with the installation and that it meets their requirements in terms of the hookup. If, if it is in fact net metered, and I'm, I'm assuming, given their location, I mean, the building, you know, they're on the grid. I, I would be surprised if they're not feeding into the grid in some way.
I think they told Brian they are.
Right. So we don't know what the floor in this process, in this particular case, has been. However, the, you know, as this gets more popular, this is gonna become more commonplace. I think the last part I'd wanna say is that we need to do some further investigation probably through the VLCT and the Vermont Planners Association, and probably with the town attorney as to whether language that we include in the town plan has, what's the word I'm looking for here? Has standing.
Standing, yeah.
In the instance of a subsequent 248 application. Because I think one of the peculiarities of it going through the Act 248 process is that it's designed precisely to ignore very serious local comment.
Well, it seems to me that, I mean, we had, had one application or one notice before us, what, a year ago or so, and it seemed kind of perfunctory that we got it, and I don't, I don't remember that we, that anything that we had to say had anything to do with anything.
Nor did we get a, nor did we get a schematic or a sketch showing-
Right.
You know, what the size of the installation was gonna be and where it was gonna be located on the parcel. It didn't give us any information that we could use, for instance.
I'm sorry, could we steal some of your chairs?
Sure.
Thanks.
If you see a big crowd coming in though, and that, we might need them back, so.
Oh, okay. We'll talk fast, it will finish.
No, don't worry about it.
Just kidding.
We didn't get enough information. So if you think about what kind of information we would want in a packet to review it adequately, we didn't get that. And so part of my problem here is trying to figure out how much and what information the Act 248 process is actually collecting in that regard. And I think that the, I'm beginning to suspect, but I need to confirm, that the onus of looking at the structure is falling on the sort of discussion between the utility and the owner.
Sort of like when they put poles in, right?
Yeah, very much, exactly. Very much like-
We don't have any say, they don't have to go before the DRB or anything like that.
Very much like-
So it's the same thing, right? Basically, yeah.
Yeah, and so the, so the relationship that's constructed between the seller, the property owner and the buyer, the utility, is I wanna sell you some power. And they say, how and how much? And then they haggle about the price and what kind of safety requirements need to be met in terms of the hookup between the alternative energy source and the grid, and they're done.
It says, yep, CVPS is doing it, or whoever would be doing it themselves, right?
Yeah.
Sort of like that.
It's pretty basic, yeah.
But were you saying that the state would review its consistency with our town plan and that we would have the opportunity to add things to the town plan as our only way of controlling?
I think it broadly does. It's like Act 250, that they do look at the town plan, as it says.
Right.
And through the process, so I think the process is actually like 21 days before the applicant actually files. They need to send notification, and then usually there's, once they've filed, we usually get another notification, and we've got like 30 days to provide comments.
Right.
At least, like, when the Sosomo one came through, that's the way it worked.
So we don't know if that's even happened in this case.
Would you review what you said? I can't hear much of what you say. You speak very low and you look the other way. So do I understand that they needed to file something with the town to let us know what they were doing?
The, yes, the process-
And they did that?
In this instance, we're not sure if they did that. We didn't receive notice that this installation was gonna take place. The Act 248 requires that the applicant notify the regional planning commission and the town at the outset, and we didn't get any notification in this instance. When we did, we, when we reviewed both Sosomo and, and Carbon Harvest, we received early notification from the Public Service Department and the Public Service Board that the application had been submitted. And we did have, for both those, we had adequate site plan information, but that was because of our local site plan review process. And so, and under Act 248, there, in broad terms, is conformance with the town plan. It still leaves me a little uncertain as to how the local zoning ordinance could review these applications with much more stringency, and still, because I think there is limits to, to the ability of a local authority to object.
So we need to find out-
We need to find, that's the part we need to find out.
In the eventuality of dealing with this-
Yeah.
We need to find out what the limits are-
Right.
And, and see, see what there is that we can do in town.
And in the current energy chapter, we identified two problems. There's sort of opposite problems. One is construction taking place or land development taking place that would actually prevent an abutter from utilizing solar panels or some form of alternative energy, so overshadowing. And then the other one, which is an installation of solar panels or something similar, creating a glare hazard for abutters or streets or something similar. And so those two things have been identified in the plan, but I don't, we, it doesn't go as far as what Liz is suggesting, and I think we need to figure out how far we can frame that in that sense.
Okay. So, so the issues, we can put in the town plan and then we can pursue them at a future time?
Yeah.
Just to finish, I completely sort of agree with the direction this guy. It seems to me, though, that, you know, it's, it's very different, a big solar array, typical to the one, oh, sorry, in the way that the one that we see going there, is very different from a power pole. You know, and see, the rights may be the same, under CVPS, and the rights may, you know, 248 may grant the utility those rights. However, it's one thing putting a pole in front of someone's house on the street, it's a whole different thing when you have what I think is probably gonna be, you know, 50 square meters of panels going up.
It's a pretty big array.
It's a pretty big array. And, and if that could happen elsewhere, you know, in the country, I don't, you know, don't think we should worry about it too much. But if it's in a residential area, I do. And I think we should consider its impact. And, you know, we regulate a three-foot-by-four-foot shed on someone's property. You gotta come and get a permit for it. You know, now we're putting up something which is 10, 20, 30 times that, and maybe quite tall, and it's completely without controls or regulation or consideration. If I was an abutter to something like that, I might be quite upset. It would appear that you don't, you know, it would appear, it's potentially, the abutter has no rights. So I would encourage just, you know, the strongest, not the strongest, good language gets put in the town plan that gives us some, some grounds to, you know, take this forward either through zoning or possibly even through the next process ultimately. You know, it's, it's clearly something that's gonna happen more and more and more and more, and should be encouraged to happen more and more and more. So therefore, it does need some kind of bounds or controls, so.
Okay. Thanks, Tim.
Glad.
Thanks, Tim.
Michael?
I'm not sure about this, but I think the rules might have changed this recently so that solar systems below a certain size-
Yeah.
Don't have to go through the same processes they used to. I also, Gary MacArthur knew my array last year, I think it came before the Planning Commission, I think.
Yes.
I think yours is the only one like that that came before.
Right, and he got that paperwork in, and so at that point, so he knew he was conscientious about it, so what would he not do, is I, I'm not sure.
Right. Yeah, 'cause we remember your application.
So it's my understanding, then, that it is the Public Service Board that makes the notifications to the town and the regional planning commission, not the owner or the builder or something.
I don't think that's the case.
No, I, I believe that it's, the first one comes from the owner of it, the property owner. They need to notify 21 days before they submit. I think every other one, we've gotten a few notifications, some that probably come from the planning service.
So I just, apparent, it seems to me if that exists in the Act, that notification has to happen, it was probably put there because the, the state recognized the concerns of the municipality. They know that there are, and they allowed for input. And this has not happened, we've not had. Now, it's not that, I understand, we may not be able to say they can't do it, or we have to force them to do various things, but I do think we should have, very quickly, the owner of those properties answer to what, why, why what has not happened, why there wasn't notification, so that we can look at it, so we can get plans, and make recommendations, perhaps for some screening or other things. And I think that should be done ASAP. Make a phone call, see what happened with the, with the notification, and it's not, I don't think it's a major deal, but there's no reason to just blow it off.
No, we have been trying to get that information. This just came up on Thursday, we got the information and, and it's, it's still-
It just came up Thursday, that we won't get to.
Brian's been attempting to get in touch with who he thought was the installer, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, he's been, he's been in communication with him, so we're just trying to figure out where, where this is at and what the issue is and why we didn't know beforehand.
All right.
Okay.
It was formerly known as Solar Hill.
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, we were wondering what took them so long.
Yeah, I mean, they're out there behind, right?
Yeah.
We actually put solar stuff in at Solar Hill when it was started.
When it was first getting popular, so was, right? Yeah.
That's right. We were solar before solar was cool. It was one, right? Electrical, anyway. Okay. This is the time for public comment, if you are here to comment about anything.
I'm not, I just have a question, if that's all right for the planning committee.
Sure, if you wanna come up and introduce yourself at the microphone.
Hello, my name's Brant Webster. I live up on Greenlee Street, and we have one acre property up there, and I was wondering, we had the engineering done on a simple split right down the middle of like a half acre apiece, and we were wondering if it's, if there would be enough space to do another split where there would be like, the main house would have, where we are now, would have a half acre, and the other half acre property would be split into two quarter acre parcels.
Well, that would be a good thing to go to the planning department about and-
Yeah.
And talk to Brian.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the zoning administrator.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Yeah. This is the, the meeting of the Planning Commission, and we, we don't process those kinds of questions in a meeting like this, but if you want to call our office tomorrow- in a meeting like this, but if you want to call our office tomorrow and then, and then look for Brian Bannon, the zoning administrator.
Great.
We can answer that question for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're really welcome.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
See you, Brant.
Bye, Gary.
Long time no see.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, fine, thanks.
So, Greenleaf Street is in Westby, so depending on how far out, it's, it's.
Don't answer his question after he's gone.
No, I don't want him. All right. Okay, that's cool.
Too tantalizing, right? Trying to get BCTV's ratings up. Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Should we open this up? Should we have like drive-through permits or something on Monday nights?
Call it in.
Green Hill Street.
Green Hill Street, that's. Green Hill Parkway. That's my street. Okay, so the, the next item on the agenda is the joint meeting of the planning commission and finance committee. Once again, welcome. Thanks for coming. We're, I think what we would like to do is, if you guys would, if there are things in your report that you'd like to call out or make, I know you've made special mention of, in the summary of everything, is there anything that you'd like to talk about? Was it, oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Why don't you, why don't we all introduce ourselves to each other? Can I start, Tim?
I'm John Lumbriding. I've been on the finance committee for a year. I'm an elected town representative from the third district and I'm vice chair of the committee.
Spoon Agave, chair of the committee. Actually, John, we do have, technically, we haven't had our first meeting of our new year since we were reappointed, so we don't have offices unless they carry over, but we have to redo that. In any case, I have been the chair for a while, the first year, this last year. And for those who have seen me elsewhere, I have a seat on the development review board.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Michael Bosworth. I am, I've been on the finance committee for a year.
It's my mother. Likewise, finance committee for a year. And I guess I have a seat on the D I B.
I think you do.
Still.
Still?
Yeah. And should we introduce ourselves? I think we probably should.
Joe Bushy, any final questions?
Your term limit.
No, I'm finishing on somebody's one year.
Oh. Timberly Hun, I'm pretty sure I have a three-year term.
You do. You do.
I'm James Swante. I don't know what my term is, but I've been here for two years.
And you have a seat.
And I have a seat on D I B.
I'm Gary Goodmore, chair of the planning commission, and my term is just about up, so, any, any week, yeah.
I'm Liz McLaughlin, and I think I have three years.
Yeah, you do.
For the planning commission.
Okay. Thank you for coming. So I think that would be a good way to start, unless, well, are you prepared to give us a little bit of a run-through or?
Well, I don't, I don't, no, I didn't actually prepare anything, but I have been thinking about it a little bit and thinking about, in, in terms of where the finance committee and the planning commission intersect. And this is rather new. I don't think the finance committee in this town has ever met with the planning commission. I don't think they've made that connection, the association there. My thoughts were certainly, and you do have that in your plan, so I guess it's, it should be a focus. In fact, it appears, as, as one would expect, that most of the things you have in the town plan, our town plan, will, in order to come to fruition at some point, require expenditures. So that's the major intersection, and because we're concerned about the town's expenditures as well as, as the whole range of the finances in town. And, and probably since you're planning, which is about the future, it logically becomes necessary to plan the finances for the future as well. If, if we really expect plans to happen. And, and I guess, I know, I don't want to throw too many things out, maybe it comes down to sort of a strategic plan about, here's all the things we would like to do and what will we do starting this year or next? And consequently, how does the money get appropriated so that the things the town would like to do, the citizens would like to do, actually happen? So probably the single two, if I, others may think that isn't quite so, but I'm thinking that the two most important things are the long-range capital plan and what we have also begun to realize the importance of a five-year budget plan, so that we're not, we're also looking at how we think revenue is, is going to change in the very near future and how that will affect expenditures. So I will just stop there. There are more things, but I'll stop there and give other people a chance.
Talk a little, you know, to expand a bit on what Spoon talked about. I think the, there are a couple of elements involved here. And one of them is, you know, point two, what we call in our report, the thing called big issues. Issue number four was lack of strategic, lack of strategic budget plan. One of the things that this committee was, a hesitance, we're disappointed, it was hoping for more structure in terms of the way that the town decides its budgets. It, it's a fairly nearly cyclical, relatively haphazard. It becomes a, it appears to become sort of a slash and cut type situation that each year pushes off, you know, paving or sidewalks or, or something which, you know, in the grand scheme of things, ultimately solves a, solves an immediate, short-term project, you know, problem, as in we balance the budget this year, or we've got the budget fixed this year, but it doesn't really look at it in terms of, you know, five years, ten years, fifteen years, twenty years. So it was our hope that the town plan would be a document that would drive the budgeting process. It would be the basis for making budget decisions on a year-on, year-on, year-on basis, which is why, you know, aside from twenty-year or twenty-five-year capital plans, we have recommended that a five-year budget plan be created. Now, the five-year budget plan works quite well with the town plan. The town plan is rolling on a sort of a five-year basis, or should roll on a five-year basis, so, so, or could continue, be, need to be continuously rolling. So we would hope that there's paragraphs or direction in the town plan that aids the municipality and the select board and the various committees in making budget decisions or strategic decisions. That's the first thing. The second thing possibly is, you know, we focus quite a bit on expenditures, but there's also income. And within the town plan, there are any number of sections, you know, land use sections or energy sections, where we're looking at potentially income, you know. And the, you know, land use, you know, restrictive land use might, might lower ground list, prevent development and therefore reduce income. And more expansive views of land use might encourage development and might encourage growth in the ground list and therefore development. So perhaps it crosses over, not, you know, to some degree from the municipal facilities chapter to looking at the land use chapter two in terms of, you know, what that chapter does for stimulation and therefore potential growth or potential increase in town income. But I think, I think, you know, for me, anyway, I don't speak for the whole committee, but to have a structured budgeting, sorry, budgeting process, which was driven, you know, driven out of the town plan, seems to me that that's the sole document that could do that. It's the correct document to do that, and there needs to be language or, or structure within the town plan that allows the town management to take vengeance from it.
Spoon?
I'd like to add, it occurs to me, I sat on the select board. There was a time that it was the traditional thing to do every year was to set goals within the board for things to try to accomplish in the upcoming years. They had lost that for a few years, but now I understand, I think, maybe you know, Rod, you can confirm that the board is again trying to do to set goals or, or they're trying, from the look on your face, they're trying but not very hard.
Oh, no. Oh, no, 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 they've done really well. The board set goals at their last, and they were announced at their last select board meeting. And that followed a process of two evening meetings scheduled purely to discuss goal setting.
So they will have some goals.
There are, the goals are already established.
And so what I'm raising this point because there could certainly be, there ought to be some reference as they talk about, perhaps you could convey this as a suggestion, or maybe we could actually send them our own memo from the finance committee, you could do it from the planning commission as well, that as they discuss their goals for the year, that they review at least the existing, or you could provide them with the proposed town plan, because you're so near finishing now, and look at that.
Right.
As a way of, to help them determine some of their goals for this year.
They, they, the range, the range was pretty broad. It included what I think could be summarized as some long-term goals, certainly longer than the duration of the current select board, and some shorter-term goals. It included things such as a commitment to pursue resolution of the police, fire or emergency services complex. It did explicitly mention implementing the town plan along with a review of the zoning ordinance, which is a recommendation already of the town plan, the draft town plan, I should say. And there's some more, there's some more sort of detailed goals, but it's a pretty broad range. I can, I think they're in the, you should find them in the minutes of the, of the very last select board meeting, so. They may not be out yet, but if you want, I can, I've got the copy of the goals back in my office, so I can take them out for you.
Liz?
Well, I thought this report was very interesting and I, where does it go? Like, other than us reading it, does it go to the select board?
Which report are you referring to?
This one, the, your annual report, your report.
Oh, our finance report.
Does the select board, do you have a meeting with the select board where you give your findings to the select board?
No, the town finance committee is a committee of town meeting. We are appointed by the town moderator. We are, don't, we answer to town meeting, not the select board. What we, we are essentially an advisory committee. We examine what's what and state what's what, make out, make recommendations. That's, everything you will see in here is phrased as a recommendation. We don't take it beyond that.
So I, I can remember times when I wondered if the finance committee's recommendations were taken seriously, you know, and I, just because I hadn't heard people citing it, and I think for, at times, it's been hard to get enough people to, to be on the committee even. And so I, I, I'm just wondering, are you optimistic about these kinds of things? I mean, I can certainly, should some of this get cited in the town plan, that would improve, I would think, the, the chances of, of things happening.
I'll just switch it to that briefly. I think that, I've, I've been on it one year, and this committee is almost entirely new committee of people. I believe it lapsed for a couple of years.
Yes.
There was no finance committee and it's, it's now back in some kind of thought process. We've, we've had a very, very positive response, this report, from a lot of levels, from town management through to town meeting reps.
Oh, great.
And I, the, the town manager's office, I mean, we're in the, almost every city. The meeting, John O'Connor attends the finance committee meeting, so we've got the key financial personnel, the person in the, in the town management, joining this committee meeting on a weekly basis. Or is it weekly? On a weekly, bi-weekly basis. And there is a request in place right now to formalize, to some degree, the structure, or sorry, the communication structure between the town manager, the town manager's office and this committee. So there's, so there's a desire in, I think there's a desire in the town, the town manager's office to strengthen the, the bond and the liaison with the finance committee. So I, you know, I have extremely high hopes for it at this point. What needs to happen now is that our, you know, initial report is moving to, you know, we now need to move into year two for this group. And some of the things that, the recommendations we made in year one and some of the things that are proposed for year two certainly need to get into the town plan if they are to have any impact at all. Because we, you know, we view that as the way that this thing gets driven forward. Now, you have to have a document that says, or documents that say, or processes that say, and policies that say, you know, this is how it should go forward. And, you know, if we come up with stuff that's contrary to what the town plan states, then that's it, that doesn't make a lot of sense. It has to become coherent on some, on some levels. Even if it's just a high level, you know, if it talks about capital, capital funds or it talks about strategic budgeting, then there needs to be reference to that in a high-level sense anyway, not down to any, in the town plan, but that's, that's an expectation.
Okay, good.
I think some of it, you know, it would be really good to have it integrated with the town plan and helpful for the finance committee to have it. So I think some of it's not really dependent on that either. I mean, some of it is just to get people thinking, I mean, just in context of very specific things. If there's a town, a police fire station proposal that's going to come up this year, we have, you know, wording in our finance committee report about debt, debt ratio and debt policy. We get into the issue of one percent sales tax, that might be applicable to such a project. So, you know, we're trying to get people to think, in particular, the town meeting members, to think about things that are very real and may come up, you know, could come up soon or, or could come up over a number of years, but, you know, trying to get them to think in ways that they haven't thought before. It's not just about items on the town meeting warrant, but rather overall health that relates to things that may come up.
And think about it in advance, too.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sometimes things come up at town meeting, and it seems like, oh, what's this, you know? And I don't mean warned things, but, you know, issues come up and questions come up, and it would certainly be helpful if people were thinking about them and talking about them ahead of time. Did John, did you have?
Yeah, I just wanted to say something. I joked in passing because one of you said you're going food shopping tonight about food prices, but they're no joke. And I say that to illustrate something that we all feel, I think, is another part of our metier, which is to try to look at economic conditions and where they may be going, what some of the trends are, extrapolating them into the future. It gives rise to a question that I have for you, and that is, how does the planning commission treat such, such matters? Do you make contingent plans, contingency plans based upon different economic scenarios unfolding? I mean, we're looking at, I think, this recession, which threatens to continue to go on for some time, maybe with some pumping up of the economy by, you know, boosting employment spending and things like that. Our counsel as a committee to the, to the town representatives was, we think you should plan very conservatively for town spending, because we think there's no promise of these trends changing anytime soon. We don't see the economic curve starting to go up on any kind of steep level soon. We don't see massive increases in revenues coming, coming down the line. So what we want to do as a finance committee is advisory in scope, for sure, but we want to be able to provide the town representatives with the information they need to plan wisely. And of course, that's your bailiwick. We'd like to, we'd like to know that there isn't any new proposal for spending coming up that might seem ratchet, might put our debt ratio up above where it should be, and especially if there's other contingencies that, that could come along that, that might also put a huge burden on finances. I think that at, at bottom, we all have a very, very strong concern for our fellow residents, and for the fact that economic conditions are not good, and a lot of people are suffering, and many people lose their homes, and many people can't send their kids to college, and many people can't afford the kind of food that they'd like to eat. I mean, all this is pretty heavy stuff, so we have to try to be proactive, I think, in looking at our economies.
Well, I would say that for us, as a commission, and, and the department in writing the plan, and conceiving of things in the plan, you know, a lot of the items that, that we think, or that we feel certainty about, that are going to happen, have to do with things like staff time, commission time, you know, there, there are many more probably time and, and energy of groups' commitments that we're trying to make. Not so many capital commitments, but one of the things that we, that we do have in the plan is that trying to get the town plan and the capital plan to be synchronized, you know, and, and recognizing that that's going to be a bit of a project, you know? And I think that's, in a, in a way, why you guys are here, you know?
I think another way, there's a few things, perhaps another way to phrase what John is saying is, it would be nice if we had thought through what we will do in times of great economic stress. Because when that happens, then the, the tendency is the leadership to just do what they think is best, and often making decisions pretty fast. They feel they have to make them fast. And, but it's, it's, it's a very worthwhile to think about what happens if there is no increase in revenue, but expenses are considered. In fact, there may be a decrease in revenue, I understand, this is for your information as well. The federal government cut the appropriation nationally for the commu- C, D, B, G.
Yep. Community development block grant.
12% or something like that, and so that's going to come right down to the states, so it's going to mean less money available. So we're going to see a decrease in grant monies available. We're going to have to become more and more self-reliant. Listening to what you're saying, I think we need, perhaps need to change our thinking about staffing. You know, it, it may be more important to have an economist of sorts, an economist slash sustainability officer in the town than it is to have some other things that we normally, maybe it's more important to have an economist working with the town than it is new sidewalks. There's, we really have to start thinking out of the box now and preparing for hard times, until we know that there won't be hard times, when something happens and all's well. But I don't, I don't see that.
Hi, I have a comment and a question. I guess my first comment would be, we've had many discussions on the planning commission about sort of making sure that we're doing this planning for the future and not being reactive to Irene and all these things that have happened that have sort of taken a toll on the community and the economic standing of the town and surrounding towns right now. So I guess my comment, or suggestion, or even, even thoughts on this is, whenever we're planning the budget, where, where do all these numbers come from? Is a percentage of the budget, can that, can a percentage of the budget, let's say 5% of the budget goes to efficiency, like you're saying? Efficiency from a standpoint of, look at all of these papers we have. I have three copies of the economic development chapter, and this is on a very minute scale, and it's my fault for not bringing my own, and Sue giving me another copy, where she was, thank you, Sue, I appreciate that. I should have been more prepared. But what I'm saying is, there, there are better ways to do things, more efficient ways to do things, and, you know, the, I feel like technology is a great way to sort of utilize these things in building inventories and, and jobs that people are doing right now, there are more efficient ways to do some of them, I'm sure. And I'm not, I don't know what jobs they are, and the idea of an economist, I don't know how much value that has, but I do think it would be worth looking into. Because the more time we spend sort of doing things the way we're comfortable doing them, the less opportunity we have to sort of take those resources and put them somewhere where they could be, like Tim said, producing income, rather than sort of us just saying, oh, look at all these things we have to pay for, rather than being more forward-thinking and not just reacting to things that we have to pay for, but saying, what else can we, is there something that the town has, some kind of asset the town has that we can make money from, that would not only enhance quality of life, but also help our local businesses and spawn more economic development? And I guess, I guess the question is, when we do a budget, we say, all right, half the budget, half our profits this year from the town is going to a fire truck, is that, I mean, is that, I know that there's sort of a list of things that need to be paid for, like the water treatment plant and upgrades, but, I mean, how, is any amount of it allocated for efficiency, or stuff that can go to make the town money, instead of just paying for stuff that already exists? Does that make sense?
Yeah. Do you want answers to any of these questions?
I do.
Okay. Very quickly. Since, since about 2008, the town has worked strenuously to accumulate what they call a fund balance, a fund, a positive fund balance. Large capital items like fire trucks are not something that are typically paid for out of the operating budget, so, because a fire truck is frequently more than a quarter of a million dollars. I think the last one was, I think the one they just bought is more like 600 or something. That's a capital item, and it's bonded, or it's, there's usually a financing arrangement that is undertaken so that, if you like, the monthly, just like anybody else or any other organization, the monthly payments are spread out over a long period of time. Because it's such a large object and it's so complicated, they tend to last a long time, and they're, they're maintained and serviced in a way so that they can last a long time. So to, to the question of efficiency, so that's how large-scale capital items are undertaken. I would say that for fixed plant and a lot of equipment such as fire trucks or dump trucks, the town usually wrings the, the very last drop out of the piece of equipment before it's replaced, and it's, all other alternatives are looked at very carefully, prior to making a commitment, because, you know, the town officials and the select board are conscious that, that the budgets are really limited, and they have much more control of the cost than they do over, over, over costs than revenues, in some ways.
So, Rod, when you say that, though, are you saying that, I mean, Tim, when he was talking about the capital budget, the capital plan, one question I had about what he said was, do the participants who are involved in that process, do they feel like it is flowing in a certain way? I mean, do they feel that...
Who do you mean by participants?
Well, the people that draw up the...
His job it is to draw the fire truck?
No, the capital plan. You know, because...
The capital plan is...
My question for you is, are you speaking of before the fire truck goes on, the capital plan, or before the particulars are, are done, so say, for a bonding?
Right.
A bond issue?
The, the capital plan goes out, I think it goes out well over 10 years right now. It's a large spreadsheet. What it's filled with is physical plant, some of it very large scale, like the wastewater treatment plant, or the water treatment plant, some of it much smaller, such as pump houses or something similar to maintain the infrastructure that we have. Those things that are to do with water and sewer are actually attached to the enterprise fund, which is managed differently from the general fund. The general fund in the, in the end backs bonds that are written against the enterprise fund, but it's a subscriber system, basically. So the more people that use water and sewer, and the more they use, the more funds are available for renewing the system or expanding the system. Subscription rates are roughly set at just above what it takes to maintain the system. So, so the, so the first thing to know is, there are two enterprise funds and one general fund. The enterprise funds, one is for water and sewer, the other is for parking, that encompasses the entire parking system, including the parking structure, the parking garage. And they are, there's some, just some minor accounting rules that are different, and they are operated differently. The general fund is about $14 million a year, and I would say that it's, it would be useful to review the effectiveness of various efficiency measures, but that the town, in the time that I've been here, has pursued efficiency measures really strenuously, where the upfront capital costs of switching from the, some old system to a new system are not exorbitantly high. So we've been working with Efficiency Vermont to switch from old light fixtures and for streetlights to LED, is one example, because of the massive reduction in electricity consumption. It's a bit of an experiment. Most of the state and most of northern New England is going through this experiment at the moment. There are some issues around the quality of the light, and how it spreads, and how it works, so people are observing that. There's some, some minor subtleties, for instance, so when you replace traditional traffic light signals with LED, they don't generate enough heat to melt the snow, so that when they fill up with snow, you can't see the traffic lights, so that's one issue that we didn't think of before. In California, it's not an issue, but it is an issue here. So there's all those sorts of subtle, you know, implementation things. We've experimented with biodiesel in the, in the town fleet bus at the time, and DPW was found that they ended that experiment, it didn't end well, had an algae outbreak in the, in the underground tank full of the biodiesel that they couldn't eradicate very easily, and it led to severe damage to some, some large equipment. So in many instances, the town is pretty open to experimenting with better new ways, and certainly efficiency measures. This building, the library, the schools, all participated in the Honeywell project that was designed to reduce energy consumption. I think the feeling on how effective that is is a little mixed, in terms of the long-term performance, but that's another example of trying to gain efficiency and reduce operating costs for the town, where you could do that by avoiding an upfront capital cost. So that's exactly how that program worked. Honeywell undertook the upgrades, and then we pay them back. Guarantee is that the utility bills shouldn't exceed what the utility bills were prior to the upgrade, so on and so forth.
Does this finance committee or the select board decide on which of these projects should be funded?
The finance committee is advisory. The budget is set by the select board. The select board brings their budget to town meeting. Town meeting is authorized to either approve the number, the final number, or not. So they can make the final number of the budget higher or smaller than what was offered by the select board. Town meeting is not authorized to allocate what they call lighter item amounts. So they cannot say, we want to take something out of salaries and put it into capital, or take this money away from the library and put it to Wrenton Parks. They can just say, we want this number to go up or down. They can debate the virtues of the budget and each line item, they just can't require a change. So it's a long and, you know, interesting discussion to follow at town meeting, but town meeting is not authorized to make motions regarding line item, line items in the budget. It's just the, the total figure.
But, but bond issues get voted on?
It votes bond issues, which then have a direct impact on the budget. So when the select board recommends that the town, you know, undertake a new bond, the town gets to vote on whether they want to take on that added burden. The select board gives advice, just as the finance committee gives advice around the, the repayment of debt, the debt, the debt servicing schedule. And one of the key points here is that as old bonds get retired or paid down, there's more room to, to undertake more new projects. So in general, what I'd say is, we are constrained to the extent that we don't have large reserves of funds so that we could integrate new systems or adopt new procedures that would be much more efficient, because we sometimes lack the capital to actually make that transition. But as a general principle, we pursue pretty, you know, pretty seriously efficiency measures. I think the biggest constraints, to some extent, are this building, which isn't a very efficient use of space, and there are some real challenges with extracting efficiency from this building. It's very expensive to heat and cool, and to light, and, you know, those, but the alternatives are what exactly?
So what...
We don't have, you know, we don't have funds to do the upgrades to this building or to obtain a new one, so...
So what if I told you that I could make you $10,000 a month, but I have to have $50,000 to start? It's a, it's an idea that, you know, the town would, the town would undertake.
That's exactly, that's exactly the challenge of the, the town may or may not increase its revenue on the basis of investments that it could make. I think the town as a public entity is pretty constrained about how far, how, if you like, entrepreneurial it could be about raising income outside property taxes and the operation of the utility and the parking fund. So there are some constraints on what we do.
So let me just, if, if you don't mind, we have the finance committee here, maybe we could...
Just, Jim, I'm sorry.
Go on. Well, I, I'm just thinking that since you're here, maybe anybody that has any questions about this... maybe, uh, anybody that has any questions about this report, and I have a couple, the, um, town finance committee annual report, um, could ask those questions.
Yeah, just, just looking at the state of the situation. One of the things that I think has happened, started happening, um, under General Eisenberg, who was the previous management director of the town, uh, and is improving or becoming, um, deeper. And we, we in our report encourage, encourage it further. It's that the capital plan, which probably was a little slick five years ago, has now got some depth to it. And we're encouraging that it's pushed out to twenty-five years. And the reason for encouraging that is that there's a lot of things that you could say, well, we need a new fire engine. And that's in some respects sort of short term. Now, the fire engine is going to, you know, wear out. We're going to need one in three to five years. But there's a lot of other things, like the roof on the school. We know that the roof on the school is going to be replacing, or a roof on a school, or a roof on this building, or whatever it is. Those things need to not be a surprise to people when they come up. And that-
Are they?
They will, they will be. They would have been. They would have been.
Well, the surprise is that we can't push it off one more year. That's the, that's the only, that's the surprise.
Yeah, I would say, yeah, I would say the pattern is that things tend to get pushed off because there's always some kind of a short-term emergency. And there's little evidence of growth in revenue. So, and that pattern has been going on and is consistent with s- static or stable population and, um, shrinking, you know, commercial values in the grand list and, and a bunch of things that, you know, the town plan goes into some detail describing that things are pretty static. And the consequences of things being pretty static or slow, very slowly shrinking are that there's no growth in revenue to attend to those things that we already know are lurking there, such as the new roof on this building. I should just add in parentheses, it affects Brattleboro residents who are taxpayers when the school building does need a new roof, but it's not part of the town's budget.
I'd like to pick up, uh, Rod just mentioned that, that, that how often we get stymied by short-term emergencies. And this refers directly to one of our, our recommendations, that we have a policy in place, and this can and should be in the town plan, to maintain a certain minimum reserve fund. That has not been the policy until now. It has historically been felt. And it's, uh, that if there was anything left over, we should throw it into next, to, to reduce next year's taxes. And I think now the thinking has begun to change, so now, so the time is ripe to really push and get that set. Because we luck, we had this huge expense last year with Irene and we had money in the bank. And, uh, so that's very important.
But you would like to set that rate?
That's what we're trying to get in the policy. We'd like to have it at two months' operating expenses. And it's pretty generous, but it's realistic. But, uh, the administration is arguing for one month. But one month, it'd be bare bones. That, that would be about a one point two million dollar reserve fund. Very important, uh-
And right now, we have about an eight hundred, eight hundred thousand?
Well, it's about nine hundred thousand. And now, I don't think we spent any of it this year for a ch- ch- change.
So what the administration would like to do is not a lot more than what we have right now.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure.
And what you're recommending is twice that, or?
They have our recommendation in front of them right now. We're waiting to hear how, how that comes out once it goes through the processes there. The second thing is, um, you can al-, it's also possible, and this has been, uh, what's the word? Uh, not avoid, um, it's possible to actually save money for a project, for something that you think is important. Historically, because we have been very wealthy, because we always assumed we would grow and there would always be more taxes and there would always be more revenue, the, the feeling was, uh, certainly in my generation, certainly in the one before me, don't worry, we'll take care of it when the time comes. Well, personally, I don't, I can't guarantee anymore what resources people will have in the future. I don't know that, that, that the future is going to be able to take care of things when the time comes. So now, we have to rethink all of that. Do we want, uh, and, and, and start, if we want to, uh, do something that if, if a recommendation for an important sustainability piece is going to require X amount of money, then perhaps we should begin every year to put some of that aside. If, when they began talking about a new police and fire station, they started to put money aside at even a half a million dollars a year, they'd have enough in the bank right now to pay for it. Because they, t- 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 talking about that project began at least as far back as nineteen ninety-eight. And, but that's, that's not the, uh, the, town has been averse to saving money for a project. And that's something that I think ought to change.
Economically though, I think a case could be made since we had not grown in population in ten years, that the growth has not been there to sustain, uh, the increased revenues that would be required to expand our, our service base as a government. I question whether due diligence has been done. I mean, I'm sure that the fire station and the police station have the flaws that our public servants say they do. But I'm not sure if due diligence has been done to explore whether we need departments that keep growing or whether they are still growing, how many police we had ten years ago, how many fire employees we had ten years ago, what the change in salaries has been, what's the result of the unfunded obligation that we have to pay health insurance for them after they retire until they get Medicare? We explore a lot of these questions in our report. These are the things we have to look at. Uh, we explore the fact that it would be quite a sizable increase in the total indebtedness of the town if we commissioned a new police and fire station. And we're also looking at a few unknowns, like the fact that Irene exposed some work that had been done twenty or thirty years ago, putting a sewer in the middle of the Whetstone Brook, which broke and had to be repaired. And we think we, we need to explore whether we're going to have to replace that or move that because that would be a huge job if we did. We have to plan proactively and also anticipate reasonable contingencies before we plan to, to spend more money. The, the fiscal conservative policies of the last five years have been great. They put us in a position to respond to Irene. We need that kind of policy going further.
If I could just address quickly the first point that John just made about the police and fire services. I think, um, it's a good question to ask, why does it appear if we, that we need expanded, um, emergency services, given that the population has been static? And one of the less obvious, um, consequences of having a static population, not just for ten years, but pretty close to a hundred, is that the population is actually aging. So there's a couple of things that are going on here. One is that, um, expectations and, uh, standards of service, uh, keep on, uh, increasing. And that, given the aging population and its increased frailty, its, uh, tendency to use emergency services, particularly fire and ambulance, keep on increasing. So we have more demand for those services than we, than we might have in the past and we may have more demand than if it was a community with a younger, healthier profile. And then lastly, and I'm not commenting on the police, I'm not really sure, um, first of all, if it's grown in size. I don't think any of these departments have necessarily added staff in the last ten years. The training requirements, the size of the equipment for the fire department have increased. And we have local architectural attributes that mean that you need to have a ladder truck that can span five stories, uh, which is fairly tall. So we have these requirements that we need to address, um, in each one of these instances. And a quality of service or a quality control question that is not anything that we're totally in control of either. So that's one aspect of that. The quality of the existing, um, facilities for those services has been, as Spinn pointed out, and kind of a known problem for, for, you know, at least twenty years. And they've not, and they've not been addressed in a systematic kind of way. There've been some minor repairs, I think, to some of the facilities and some upgrades to others, but not any, um, large-scale solution to the problem. So the, it's the demographic, it's, it's literally the demographic profile that's contributing to increased costs on the one hand and not contributing increased revenue on the other. That is part of the problem.
And I can tell you that, um, ever since the, the scoping group-
Yep, town plan scoping group? Yes, two thousand and eight.
Thank you.
Go on, Gary.
Ever since that group started, which was sort of the beginning of this planning process, town plan, planning process, we've been doing it with a backdrop of a lousy economy. And, you know, unknown when that would improve and unknown what it, what, if it will improve. So we, I think consistently and constantly have had, you know, some of, at least the concerns that you folks have brought to us, um, in the background as we've been planning. So for instance, what Rod said, you know, one of the things that we, uh, uh, are talking about is, you know, not having, um, developments happen where there's only one way in and one way out, you know? And that, and that has a lot to do with the, the aging of the population and the needs of an aging population and, you know, the need for emergency services and so forth during flooding and whatnot. So I, I, I would say that we've been, we have responded quite a bit to the, um, to the economic times that we've been living in while we've been doing the town plan. So I, I mean, I, I think these are great, um, points that you're making. And I think we have tried to incorporate many things into the plan.
I would like to see, uh, moving on to another recommendation, something akin to what you may have heard that one of our representatives, Senator White, is, um, has a, uh, bill in Montpelier to create what is called a genuine progress indicator. And it, rather than measuring, which she has found, found quite wanting, our progress, our strength in terms of gross national product or gross state domestic product. She, it's, it's, it's a nut, it's a very different list of, um, poverty rates, of environmental degradation rates, of all, of all things that relate to our actual quality of life. Now, you can look that up and you can get the whole list of things that they're looking at at the state. The state of Maryland actually is the one state now in the U.S. that actually has this in place and they are using it statewide. Many of the things are, at, that are on that state list are not really appropriate for a municipality, especially a small municipality like that, like us. Some are, but we have our own. And I, in order to move forward anywhere in this town, on your commission, on our committee, anywhere, we all need to be on the same page and have the same information and a, and a clear agreement on reality. It does us no good when a person of some influence or prominence steps up and says, oh, I read in the newspaper, the, the federal government said, we look like we're coming out of the depression. When in fact, our own statistics has shown that foreclosures in town increased from eleven to thirty-four. When school lunches went up even, more kids on school lunches. When there are more people unemployed, when there are more people homeless. We need to know this every single year. In some cases, some of these statistics even more often. But we need to be able to talk to each other and make decisions intelligently. And we can only do that with concrete information. And establishing that, I think, is one of the single most important things. And it's not, and, and it will also get a lot of resistance because even though a lot of these things don't take much work to actually do because the, the statistics are already there and quite often already compiled. But when you start, when everybody's looking at the same statistics, it makes it hard for decision, de- decision makers to talk through their hats and make c- c- claims about things that aren't true and which you don't have any time or any way of trying to validate or verify.
So let me ask again if, if the commission has questions about, you know, about the facts in here. That would be good, I think.
All right.
Liz?
Well, I found your report very interesting. And Gary, I'm not sure when we'll schedule time to go over the recommendations and see how they can be incorporated.
Very soon.
Very soon. Um, but I do have some questions, mostly about these key municipal indicators. So in reading the report, it was clear to me that the town's downfall was these tax reductions of two thousand and two and two thousand and three. But I'm looking, is it, is it normal or appropriate for, like, if the town budget was like, um, nine million dollars in two thousand and two and fourteen million dollars today? That's like a fifty percent increase. Is, do you, does your committee judge, like, whether that's a?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't follow the, uh-
It seems as if there's been a fifty percent increase in the town budget in the past ten years.
Yes.
Is that something that other communities have a similar increase? Is that-
I don't know offhand, but from what little I know, that, that our rate of increase in the town budget feels normal. Does anybody else want to?
Uh, it's to do with the reappraisal, in large part.
Yes, but the budget shouldn't have to do with the reappraisal.
Well-
The reappraisal teaches percentages, but it's still gone from, from, um, as Elizabeth pointed, from ten million to forty million.
Yes.
In a ten-year period.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just wondering, is that-
Right, yes.
So do we judge, I mean, have we looked extensively at other municipalities by size? We haven't at this point, but it's, I think, a very good thing to do. The other thing is, you know, can we sustain that kind of growth?
Yeah, I mean, the one question leads to the other, really, you know, is that a normal type of thing? And then I also thought, didn't we, wasn't there another appraisal since two thousand and nine? Wasn't there another one?
Two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven.
It was, it was just completed, really. So it straddled the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. Yeah.
This, so that there wasn't really much change in the grand list?
No, there wasn't.
The second time?
No.
But I think that we have some judgment in here about, you know, the growth that we can sustain, growth like that.
Right.
If the grand list is not growing at the same time.
Right.
And then I just have one more question about these allocations. I know that they're not part of the, they're, they're capital and they're not part of your operating funds, but do they become, um, kind of a, a, an allocation that creates space in the budget? funds, but do they become kind of a, an allocation that creates space in the budget when they say, like, if you don't buy a fire truck the next year, but you increase it, the budget by that same amount? I don't know how to phrase this.
Let me explain, let's take the fire truck. The fire truck was paid for, or the town reps voted money to pay for the fire truck in the amount of $430,000. That came out of the unassigned fund balance. So that's, 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 that's what, so a budget was proposed, income came in, a certain expenditure occurred by the town, and then we had an unassigned fund balance of, pick the number, $900,000.
Mr. Vanny?
The town, it was, the town reps then voted to spend $50,000, $400,000, $430,000 of the unassigned. So that wasn't a part of the budgeting process, that wasn't part of the capital plan, but they chose to spend the unspent part of the budget.
Right. My question's a little bit different. I'm wondering, does that amount, when it's part of the town budget one year, become like a bump to increase the budget the next year, even though you're not getting a fire truck or some other large...
Uh, actually, Liz is right. It did, it did bump this year's budget.
Because that's a big lump and then you, and then everyone could say, well, we didn't, we only increased the town budget by such and such percent, but really, that included the fire truck that you didn't have in the following year.
And it did, it did, it did impact the structure of this year's budget because of the way that fund balance is treated.
Let me try and explain that. It...
Yeah, no, it's odd, but...
We had the, we went into savings. That's what, that's what that unassigned, that's our savings account. That's what we're asking to get the policy. So it's essentially as if you have an income every year of $30,000 and your expenses are $30,000 and you have a savings account of $20,000. Now, you need to buy a car, so you just use your entire savings, but you still have an income of $30,000 and you still otherwise have expenses of $30,000. So your, your, your so-called operating expenses haven't changed. Your income hasn't changed, your operating expenses hasn't changed. What you did was spend everything that you had saved.
But didn't we put back into the reserve to make up for the cost of...
No. We had, well, some money was added into the reserve, which increased it. That, that was a surplus. That was because as we got lucky and, and at the end of the year, for instance, that same analogy, your income was $30,000, but in fact, because this event happened, you only spent $29,000. So you had a $1,000 surplus at the end of your year. So then you put that back into your savings.
So let's go back to the fire truck. So this $430,000...
Came out of the savings account.
Was not part of the $14 million town budget?
No, it was not.
Was not.
It would have been.
It should have been.
It should have been, but it wasn't.
It should have been, but it wasn't.
Oh, now you got me.
Well, no, no, no.
It, it was going to be bonded.
Dora, you want to say who you are?
I'm Dora Bubelis Brattleborough. It was going to be bonded and the decision of the recommendation of the finance director sort of coming into later on to the town meeting was that there was enough cash that we should pay cash for it instead of assuming more debt and bonding. If we had bonded, it would have ended up as part of the budget and we did what we should have, well, of course, Tim is going to argue something differently. I mean, there's, there's two sides to this, is that is you can take it out of your savings as Spoon is talking about and pay cash so that you don't have to assume the debt. But then you, you obviously are drawing down your savings and don't have that in the event of a, a huge emergency in which you, you know, need, but that was the original intent, was to bond out for that, if that helps.
And had it been bonded, the bond payments would have gone into the budget and it would have been...
Just, just another, if you did, if you look back to June, the June, June of, sorry, '05, and you run across to the outside fund balance there, was that, that was negative at that point.
Right.
So that year, we managed to consume our savings and go, and go negative.
And so you had to reassess?
Yeah, well, the, sorry, the grand list reassessment was based on state strategy. That has to happen on a 10-year period.
We also posted really big surpluses.
But, you know, we can have a good year, we can have a bad year. You know, in the good years, we get surplus funds and they go into the outside fund balance and then the town reps can, can spend it if they wish. In the bad years, in one case, we went negative.
Right. No, my question was just, was, was the allocation part of the town budget and would have increased the budget like a phantom in another year or, but thank you for clearing that up.
Yeah, I'll get you something on that because I've struggled to understand it from an accounting standpoint, but there is a way in which the decision to purchase, which may have been prudent given the cost of borrowing versus the cost of buying a fire truck for cash, but that still does kind of echo through the budget for some period of time. If you are committed to maintaining a fund balance at a certain level, then you have to pay back, if you like, the fund balance. That's the best way to think about it. So it's not...
And then it shows up as an expenditure in the budget?
Yes.
And then I just have one more question. Things like little snow removal, do we get a savings from that, like this year?
Well, that's why when things like that happen, like you have a warm winter and there's almost no snow removal, you don't use much salt or sand, those are often the things that may lead to the surplus at the end of the year.
Right. So you probably are better off taking kind of like a five-year running average or something to try and figure out those kinds of expenses.
Because sometimes it may be more.
But then there may be an executive decision to spend more money on asphalt, which the price of oil was sending a sky high.
On it, we have actually, it wasn't this year, but I think it was last year, right, Gary? There was a decision to, I'm looking to you, because...
To pave.
To pave a lot in conjunction. The year that the state came to do Route 5...
Yeah, '09.
We made a decision to increase the amount of money in the line item for, for paving precisely because the disruption caused by redoing Route 5 was so significant that we figured we'd sneak some other stuff in under people's noses when they were blaming the state. And that the price was fairly good at that point and we expected it to go higher. So we tried to maximize the paving projects at that point. So we actually did borrow or bond more at that point precisely for that reason.
That sounds proactive to me.
It was, that was Dick DeGrace's suggestion.
That was because of the cost of money, right? More, more activity.
We got a good rate and combined with activity and we could, we could, you know, to be, not to be sarcastic, but we literally could do side streets and so forth that entered onto Main Street so that you got, you got a much better project, total project in the end for the extra money.
So does anybody else have any questions about this report? I have one quick one about, about the debt percentage. I see that, you know, I mean, it sounds like there's an expectation in town that, well, you say here that an acceptable level of town debt is between 10 and 15%. What you're recommending is 8.3%. How would that compare to, say, northern New England or Vermont in general or, I mean, I see that it's the, the level nationally.
That figure of 8.3% was taken out of a national survey of states and municipalities. That's the average. We didn't examine that, we didn't look at all the like comparable-sized towns in, in Vermont or anywhere.
Okay. Is there a way that we could?
Is what?
Is there a way that we could? Can you, do you know the source of the data where you got the 8.3% figure?
No, no. I got it off of a, a report from the federal government or something, a Maryland, a statewide report, and then I didn't save that email address.
Okay.
They actually had this beautiful chart year by year, year by year, throughout all of history.
That would have been great.
We don't have it on the site? It's not on the website?
Um, yes, it's still there.
We may have it on, on our website.
Oh, on ours?
We may have it, we may have that.
You guys have a website?
Yeah.
Wow.
Do you have your pictures on there and everything?
So are you going to start a blog?
No.
But you have a link to that, to that.
I, maybe, maybe, I'm not sure.
All right. Not, not in this report, unrelated, but Lisa, who was on this board for the first half of the year, she did a lot of research on school districts and, well, as I said, really dug into it in terms of, you know, percentage cost and, you know, per pupil and what Venetum was spending and, and Michael, sorry. Uh-oh. They did an awful lot of work digging into where, you know, Wilmington sits, Bennington sits, Rockland sits. We took some comparative studies to, to, in the state with regards to schooling. We didn't have the options the other times, one year, you know, to look at it from municipalities, but we did begin to look at comparative towns or take a little look at comparative towns, not in state of Vermont, but say Massachusetts, you know, luck New England, but there's no supportive data at this point. It's, it's something that's on our list for this year.
To perhaps a quick to try and understand debt limit, what, what the figure you're looking at is the percentage of money out of the budget that goes to service the debts. So if, for instance, the town went ahead with a lot of bonding and increased its debt ratio to, say, 15%, on a $14 million budget, that means one about $2.1 million that would be allocated to paying off debt.
Okay, that's good to know. All right.
John?
I just want to say that this has been my first year serving the town on any of the town committees and it's been a real wonderful experience for me. I don't know how many meetings we had, probably in the neighborhood of 20, 25 meetings during the year, something like that. Still, there was, as we were reconstituting the committee under Spoon's leadership, there was, I think, a conscious decision to be careful and not to try to overreach our, our charge. We wanted to provide some general guidelines, we wanted to point to some hot-button issues. We didn't want to try to run the agenda and I don't think we should be doing that. But the, the better information we can give you and the better information we can give the voters and the better information we can give the town reps, the better policy we feel we're going to have. And the other thing I wanted to say is that your explanations of how the, the town select board and the town finance, the, the town, either your committee, the planning commission, how they function together were helpful and, and how the town reps make decisions versus how the select board makes decisions and what should each of them do. We see ourselves as part of a system of checks and balances because we are not beholden to the select board, we're beholden to the reps, the town reps, and thereby to the voters themselves. And so we feel a kind of latitude in making suggestions that will be helpful to the town and, and we want to encourage people to come to us and say, what do you think about that? Should we look into that a little more closely, that kind of thing? So that people don't feel as though it's all vertical decision-making, you know, we have some latitude.
What you might say is the town finance committee are the citizens' second opinion.
Okay.
That's very quotable.
Well, I, I think this is very thoughtful work and very interesting and we will take a look at it, I think, probably in our, at our next meeting when we're looking at the municipal facilities and services chapter next. Dora?
Dora Bubelis, I just want to say that one of the things that we forget about because we're talking about taxes and municipal services, because we have these enterprise funds of vital services that people, most people in town use and need, that's still municipal services and it's expense, it's an expense of living here. And I think when you're looking at that and you're thinking about how to talk about that in the chapter, that it would be really important to sort of make note of that and, and include that in because, because it's not just about taxes, it's about all the services. And if you have an enterprise fund that's water and sewer and the majority of people in town use water and sewer and they need water and sewer and they have to pay it and those expenses keep going up, that's, that should be included in that base of expenses to live here that's related to town services. It's not just what you're paying in taxes.
That's in the report.
I think it is.
Okay, it is in the report. Great. Can I just segue from a couple of questions that these folks had to the next item on the agenda?
Sure.
Because there were some links and...
Are we getting off the agenda? I just have a...
It's up to you, Michael. I don't know.
So the part where we're discussing the municipal facilities and services chapter, that part hasn't happened too much tonight. I mean, I think it's very relevant intersection between what we do, what you guys do in it. So that's the plan, that you're going to take it up your next meeting, is that...
Well, I, we should probably talk about that out loud here. We're, we're, we are wanting to be done by 8:30 and I thought that since you guys were here, it would make sense to hear everything you had to say, not everything, but, you know, sorry, Tim. But, and so I thought that was a good use of our time and so I, I don't think we're going to be able to cover our whole agenda. So with the commission's approval, if the commission so approves, I would like to...
Can I add one more? I'm not suggesting that we have to do it tonight, I'm just asking that there's going to be more opportunity to give input to that chapter.
That's what I'm talking about. I, I would...
This is part one. This is part one tonight.
This is part, well, this is actually...
Stay tuned for part two.
The second or third time that we've talked about that.
As far as the joint meeting with them.
Oh.
It sounds like that warrants another continuation of this joint meeting with them. Is that what he's saying?
Well, I think what, what I'm proposing is that we talk about municipal facilities and services, the chapter, at our next meeting and not talk about it tonight.
But do you have input on that? Is that what you're saying? I do, but it doesn't necessarily have to be done in a joint meeting. I mean, that could come back.
Yeah. And, and we can, you know, I mean, what, what has happened at, at really all the meetings that we've had about the town plan chapters is that people come and sometimes people come and sit right here and we tuck it over, so.
I, I would like to do it at another meeting so that we can, so I can ponder how these recommendations fit into not only that chapter, but maybe others.
Okay. Spoon?
I might add, for those who don't know, I actually sat on the planning commission for six years and was in fact the chair when the last town plan that you're revising was completed and passed. And so I have a pretty good history of that. Coming from the committee, I think our strong, our strongest references in some are the 25-year capital plan and the five-year budgeting process, which we would really like to see in the town plan. Coming from me, we did not discuss was the general progress indicator, et cetera. Would also like to... also like to say, I know you guys have to get this plan finished one of these days. I faced the same thing. One of the things I didn't realize, I was much newer in town affairs at the time, you can, some of these things are big and they're going to take a lot of time and thought and work. You can go ahead, if you're pressed, and limit what you're going to do for this plan and you can, you have the power to amend or to make recommendations to amend the town plan on an ongoing basis. And that's something most planning commissions tend not to do. They like to finish a plan and forget about it. But I encourage you to think about continually adding, strengthening, amending.
I have just one brief, brief comment and I agree with you, Spoon. Whether we like it or not, things are changing pretty quickly. I mean, even in, just everything right now is changing quickly, especially in what's going on in downtown Brattleboro. It's interesting what's happening and for the past two hours, we've spent going, we've talked about stuff that you guys know, but we don't know and we really didn't get anywhere. It was a, you know, I'm glad we all came together, but it was, we need to be able to figure out a way to share information, to share these issues more efficiently. It seems like, you know, and I know it's partially my fault too, because I'm, I want to understand how this stuff works and I'm always asking Rod questions and Rod doesn't just answer a question, he answers a question. So, no, and you're very thorough and that's, you know, that's, that's how it, that's how we learn how this stuff goes, but it just seems like we're missing something as far as how we're all, I don't know if it's how we're informing ourselves or how we're sharing information and not just through our commissions, but in the town in general. I mean, how, how hard is it to find out who owns a piece of land or who, you know, how did, where the tax incentives come from, all this stuff. It's just, there has to be a better way to do this. And, you know, it's, I feel like that's where some of our resources should be put is, you know, call it efficiency, call it whatever you want, but this is just, this is crazy how much information, how many questions we're asking and we don't have answers to any of them. And I feel like we're reinventing the wheel. We're talking about, oh, well, solar panels. What are other towns doing with their, with their zoning and how they're handling solar panels? And, you know, what, is there a list of case studies somewhere and case studies that other people can see? It's just, I don't know.
Well, I think it's important when we have these discussions though, to ask the questions and then, you know, if it's something that, that needs an answer, we have staff, unlike most towns, we have staff who can do research into things and does do a lot of research for our, for our use, you know.
There are some planner services like the American Planning Association and Plans in that have articles about that that can be searched and...
Yep. And there's the Planus Association. There's a bunch of, there's a bunch of resources that we, that we generally use that are available to the public as well.
I think we would certainly welcome your commission appointing a liaison to our committee.
Maybe the next person that comes down, the commission, would be, would leave the room and get volunteered for that.
Oh, I volunteer. I think it would be very...
Everybody's welcome at our committee meeting.
And you read every couple of weeks, is that?
In fact, tomorrow.
First and third is...
Yeah.
Second and fourth is...
Second and fourth, four-thirty.
Where do you meet?
Usually right here or next door.
Can we have a few meetings in the Green Street School Library, which have been... The chairs are loose.
So, can I say something? Mr. Spoon, Timely, I think that your comment about efficiencies is something that this committee, council committee, could easily add to our agenda this year in terms of something. We have a little plan here for this year. I think that recently we go as a subject, just start a dialogue here, start looking at what issues are there with the broad term efficiencies.
It's an issue, I would say it's an issue for town management as well. I mean, information, just sharing and so forth is incredibly complex and time-consuming and it's actually fairly costly to get right. And so smaller communities struggle, you know. If we were in San Diego, we'd be perfectly comfortable having you as a smartphone user, use an application to notify the public works department of the city of San Diego that you just noticed a leaking hydrant or something and you just use an app to let them know and then that automatically issues a work order which goes to the dashboard of the truck in the morning and then it's done. So it's very cool and very hip if you've got a lot of money. We don't have that kind of money. So people just mention it in passing. And it, and it gets to us. It just takes a little longer. So, you know, there are, there are definitely, there are huge applications here that are available and that people work through quite seriously. They are a little beyond us in terms of cost, but it'll get cheaper or free and so we're ready for it. So the segue from their question to the economic development chapter is that Spoon mentioned the Gund Institute work on the genuine progress indicator. So the very last page of the economic development chapter includes a discussion of community development and cites, the last, you know, shaded bullet item is given current demographic trends, local assets and resources, dramatic growth targets are unrealistic. And then there's two subsequent bullets. So alternatives to conventional economic growth models of valid values for community organizations to pursue and then could be compatible with what we want to do. So I list a whole bunch there. The slow economy movement is locally sponsored by the Strolling of the Heffers organization. There's a connection there. The new American dream is an alternative to standard economic accounting tools, including gross domestic product. The genuine progress indicator was developed by the Gund Institute, which is an environmental economics institute at UVM, formerly of the University of Maryland, which explains why first it was the state of Maryland and now it's the state of Vermont that are at the forefront of adopting genuine progress indicators because it's the same people. And then the United Nations last week announced that they were happy to support happiness indicators. And the Earth Institute from Columbia University and Jeffrey Sachs has released an international survey of happiness. And there's a direct correlation between coldness and proximity to the North Pole and deep happiness. And we are too close, we are simply too close to the equator. So that's all I can say.
The closer you are to the...
Yes, we are too close to the equator.
You're happier if you're closer to the North Pole?
Yeah. The deepest, the deepest happiest, the deepest happiness you can feel is in Finland, Norway and Sweden.
In North Korea.
And?
North Korea.
And North Korea. And you know they're ecstatic.
That's just because they're told to be happy.
There is that issue with them, but we're pretty confident about, we're pretty confident about Scandinavia, that they're pretty happy.
They have a different set of rules.
Are we dismissed?
Yes, so...
You are able to leave whenever you want. Thank you very much for coming.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
For all the information.
So Liz, thinking through that budget, you've really caused me to look at those shifts in the town budget and I think that a couple of things stand out. If you look at the surplus deficit and the unassigned reserves, they climb in years where there's actually quite a significant budget change. So there was obviously a conscious decision to increase the budgets to assign funds to the unassigned reserves, if you follow that bad use of language. Then the other part about it is, in my experience, since we've been here in 2008, the other cost drivers have been energy prices, but most importantly, insurance costs and most of that associated with health insurance costs. So like just like about any other employer or any other smallish organization, those costs are not totally out of the town's control. There's things we could do to reduce our healthcare costs, but they are not things that are super sensitive to what we do.
But then this report talks to a lot of, you know, retiree health payments that are not being paid and that bill's coming due.
Yeah, I think my concern would be, right now it's paid out of, you know, as you go basis and it is a hundred thousand dollars a year, which is roughly manageable, but if it climbs much beyond that, it's going to get less and less manageable.
And your report says in twenty-five years, you predict it to be six...
Six hundred thousand, which would be unmanageable.
And that, that amount definitely warrants Spoon's suggestion of, better start saving something for that.
Something now.
Right. Well, that's the old challenge, you know. Not very many people start putting away money for a new car the day they drive off the lot with their brand new one, but you know, that's the kind of behavior that it requires. So. There's always old Volvos, actually. So, all right. To that, I think, but the health insurance is a really big factor.
And that would be regardless of what the state does or the federal government does with health?
Well, you could have a real federal government that really, you know, you could, you could have a Supreme Court and you could have a lot of different things, you know, you could be like Canada and solve it pretty quickly, but, yeah. But assuming that you have got the ones that we've got, it's not clear to me when it's going to get resolved. But I just want to know that we respect your rights.
Would you like to tell us the difference between these two?
One's bigger than the other?
I can't feel that.
Okay. So the last time we met, I mentioned that I thought that the principle was weak and I haven't changed it and I still think it's weak. I didn't really mess around with the second goal, which was to do with clusters, but I should have. I added policy number three, so we now have six policies instead of five, and policy number three addresses childcare explicitly. And it has four actions. One concerning working with the Wyndham Childcare Association to identify unmet childcare needs. Two is to ensure zoning changes provide for childcare as a permitted use. We already do, so there's no real conflict with the current zoning ordinance. Three is encourage children childcare business development through the Small Business Assistance Program. In my time on that committee, we've never lent money to an organization or an individual who wants to be involved in providing childcare. I think that by working with Wyndham Childcare Association, we could change that. And then support the Wyndham Childcare Association, the Regional Career Center and the Wyndham Workforce Investment Board in ensuring access to training opportunities for childcare workers so that more people have better qualifications. So that's new.
Rod, with action three point three, encourage childcare business development through the SVP, SBAP, does the SBAP, does it seek out applicants ever or is that...
Seek might be too strong a word and that's kind of an issue. I mean, I think as an economic development strategy, what we should do is encourage more effective promotion of that as a, as a panel or as a body. I think the limiting factor is, going back to the budget question, it accesses what we call second generation VCDP funds, which are funds that are under the direction of the town that originated with a VCDP grant in the first place. We're running a balance of around about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. There are many things that can call on that money. It's pretty open as to how we can use it across a range of programs.
But they aren't right now, right? They're not aligning themselves over right now. Is that what you're saying? Is that one of the things you're saying?
Just let me, let me try and restate it. So what we don't do is allocate a certain amount of year, certain amount of money per year to the Small Business Assistance Program or another program that may have calling, you know, may have the ability to call on those funds. So it's kind of open-ended as to how much of those funds we would use. And then there's questions about the rate of, you know, the rate of repayment on old loans and stuff. So it's a little bit more complicated and would take a little bit more management of that fund. And I think that that might be worth exploring.
Is, how is the rate of repayment?
Historically, it's been pretty poor. Recently, it's been better.
Yeah, like under fifty percent or over fifty percent?
I couldn't give you a figure like that. I just know that there's a couple of pretty big loans that didn't get paid out, but for the most part recently, they do get paid out.
And so is there, since there isn't any allocation or any budgeting of those funds, which I'm sure is like hitting a moving target, right? That's, I think that's one of the problems probably with it. Then you wouldn't know, if you don't, if it doesn't get budgeted, you wouldn't know, like to say, well, we want to take thirty thousand dollars and say, and invest it with some higher leverage activity, like childcare might be a high leverage activity.
Right.
Right. And this is saying it is a high leverage activity.
Sure. And so, yeah. And so we don't, so, you know, if seven, if seven small businesses applied for that same pot of money on the same day, it would be really difficult to determine whether we were gonna like, you know, we could exhaust the fund in one, in one meeting, right? We've typically done a couple of loans a year, varying in size. The largest amount that you can give out is forty thousand dollars, but we could do better. And so there's a question around, do you want to promote something that you don't, you have, we have to figure out a little bit more how we're going to work it before we promote it because we should be saying something like, we could lend out up to and specify an amount in a year or whatever it is. The good news is, is that because we've been fairly successful at participating in much bigger VCDP projects, in some, in a couple of years' time, we'll start getting new top, you know, new funds paid into that.
Payback.
Yep. Call it dare, it'll start paying back.
So the fund could actually grow.
Yep. Ten sixty-three Western Avenue will start paying back. So there's a couple of projects that have gone out the door. It's very large scale projects where we're expecting to get quite significant, you know, payments back, but they haven't started yet.
And who administers that fund?
Basically, it's the finance director and the grants manager. And there's a committee that sits and reviews the applications, made up of representative from the BDCC, Jeff Lewis, a local bank, the select board member and staff. So then the policy four is new, which is to develop a comprehensive neighborhood plan for the new market tax credit eligible census tract. Policy five is the old policy four. And then policy six is to work with state entities and private providers to increase access to affordable business infrastructure. And here, I'm thinking in particular of access to broadband. So we are on the sort of, we're at the point where Souvenet is likely to start installing the fiber optic infrastructure for internet in Brattleboro. It's scheduled to happen by summer of 2013. And so that's what they call a middle mile project. So we need to ensure that there are providers, internet service providers that will pick that up and make it available to businesses and institutions. The town will receive that internet service for a reduced rate for a couple of reasons. One is that they're going to be located in this building to do it with their local hub. And the other is that we're a municipality and we have a, you know, kind of a preferential treatment. The library will also get it. So that'll instantly be pretty hot, hotspots. And then the idea would be to identify incubator space in the downtown that was flexible in its form so that people could have short-term projects or longer-term but access. or longer-term, but, uh, access to something like a desk. So the term used here is hoteling or, um, something similar. So you rent, basically, you rent a desk for, you know, as short as a day or on an ongoing basis. There's a small project that's similar being operated by Marlborough Graduate Center called The Bridge, which is literally the bridge over one forty-two. They're doing okay with that, but we think that that's an area of business activity that we'd want to boost more.
So when the, when this comes through, that, will that happen there too, or?
Should, Marlborough will be able to connect.
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure what they use right now. I don't know, I don't want to get too geeky here. I'm not sure what their, their own arrangements are. But I'm assuming that either ours will be faster and/or cheaper than what they currently got. So it's good news for large users of the internet. We have some concern about, um, how to maximize land use planning in industrial and commercial districts, both to the north and the south of the town, to make the most of the existing rail provision and encouraging rail spurs in appropriate places. And then how to ensure, um, access to those spurs because it'll be on private land so that we can facilitate greater use of rail for local transportation needs.
You're talking about like North Brattleboro?
Yep, and to the south.
West Resossmore Irving in that area?
Mm-hmm, there's a kind of a loading yard, you know, opposite Triple T on one forty-two. It could be rearranged to facilitate.
Freight handling.
Freight handling. And then in the north, uh, there's a possibility of a spur going in, um, near Putney Road and Route nine. And then there is a rail, an old disused rail spur behind Spurven Propane. And there's a spur for Fiber Mark. It could be a spur, for instance, at CNS or further up as well.
For a cabin harvest or something out of a fairway.
Yep, yep.
While we're talking about trains, wouldn't it also be an economic benefit to the town to petition and track to have their, um, express stop here?
I didn't know they had an express that didn't stop here.
Well, there's one in the morning that stops in White River Junction in Springfield.
Oh, Springfield.
Massachusetts, each an hour away. And if it stopped here, you could commute to New York very easily.
Okay, um.
When they do the rebuilders, is that part of that, I wonder, or?
I don't think it is at present, and I think the town should ask.
Did you go over on that?
No, I did not know that.
Okay.
I didn't know that you could go, well, that's, you still can go.
Right, okay, that's good. So, um, then the other things that we have here are a little varied. We're concerned about the generally small size of remaining industrial parcels. So we don't want to, we want to actually increase the minimum parcel size for industri, for industrial zoning districts so that they don't become so fragmented, so that we can have larger-scale projects. There's some discussion of that further into the chapter. We want to continue effective, um, access to industrial districts by heavy vehicles that might call for some traffic engineering solutions, both to, again, to the north and the south. There's been some movement around using liquefied or compressed natural gas to, both for industrial uses and for transportation uses. So there are.
A port, maybe?
No, more like, more like a, so right now, along, I guess it's Interstate ninety? The one that? The one, no, the one that goes right from California to here, basically. They are almost, uh, they've got thirty or so compressed natural gas filling stations for eighteen-wheelers along that route already.
Really?
Yeah. And so what's happening in the eighteen-wheeler, you know, heavy haulage sector is a transition across to compressed or liquefied natural gas, um, which is half the price of diesel and roughly the same in terms of BTUs. So the state has, through the Public Service Board, has been working on ensuring that, um, natural gas supplies coming down from Canada make it to the western side of the state. So servicing Chittenden County, uh, along Lake Champlain down to Rutland. And the hope is to connect Bennington to that line for residential and commercial uses. And then there's a small, uh, operation on the eastern side, right up on the Canadian border. So the idea here is that if we don't find a way of, um, connecting to natural gas supplies, that the economic development of the area could be thwarted or sort of slowed down to some extent, particularly given our existing commitment to warehousing and transportation. So the idea here would be to explore the viability of trucking large amounts of compressed or liquefied natural gas in and then having it service large-scale industrial users, again, like Fiber Mark and so forth.
I worked on a liquefied natural gas project in Rhode Island.
Yeah. Did they do it in the end?
No, because liquefied natural gas is very dangerous. And so while all of the land use reports and, it required a, a full environmental review, a FERC application. And while all those elements were positive, public safety was negative. And the entire Rhode Island Congressional delegation was against it.
Right.
Because it, it's, it creates the potential for catastrophic combustion.
Yes, it does.
So while natural gas storage is dime a dozen.
Yep.
Storage of liquefied natural gas is an entirely different animal.
Right. And I'm not sure about the take on compressed natural gas, it goes backwards and forwards. So there are issues, so, but it's, I would say, investigating the feasibility is pretty mild. There was, there was a proposal to have a port, uh, in Massachusetts, fairly close to Boston, and that got mixed.
Yeah, they were similar, Falls River and Providence were kind of neck and neck and.
Right, it was, it was right, it was Falls River, that's right. So there are issues with that. But I think that there's some discussion already about how much the transportation sector is going to switch to compressed natural gas in particular. And then lastly, somewhat haphazardly, we've been able to establish that, both in industrial districts, the industrial district to the north and south of town, that there are limitations to or obstacles to ensuring full buildup of those districts, given the current infrastructure for water and sewer delivery. So Old Ferry Road has issues with sewer and with water.
Oh, really?
Yep. And so Exit One Industrial Park has obstacles in terms of the complexity of installing it or servicing each one of those parcels. And then I think further south on one forty-two, there are major lines, but making the connections to the land that could utilize it is, um, less than clear. So one of the challenges that we have is that when we advertise or try and promote industrial uses in Brattleboro, it pretty quickly turns to a question of, well, I need this much water or, or I want to dump this much waste. And it's not always clear that we have the capacity to handle it.
Through the lines or?
Through the lines. The wastewater treatment plant is not the problem now, it's the lines, both potable water and, and wastewater.
Yeah.
There are some sections of the town sewer line areas where a whole section of town is served by one six-inch line.
Yes.
And, you know, that was installed in the fifties or the sixties or something like that.
Or even eighteen, eighteen fifties.
Yeah.
Uh, that would be Main Street near the post office.
Deep Street.
And by the hospital and that whole hillside.
Yeah, but that doesn't need a lot of water.
Sponge bath.
Yeah, roll in the grass. So, um, it's one of those things that I think is sort of a, it's a little bit similar to that one that the Finance Committee brought up about the sewer line. It seems like it would be worth mapping out the system and understanding, you know, where the bottlenecks are or the obstacles are to further development. Because we've had such low rates of development that it hasn't come up as an issue for such a long period of time. But if we are to promote development, then we should know at the outset whether we're, uh, well situated to accommodate it or not. And it looks maybe like we're not as well placed as we thought we were.
But there's, there's good access for smaller parcels though, right?
Yeah.
Out Putney Road, there's, there's, uh, I mean, pretty good infrastructure out there, right? The lines go out.
I think there's a section that's a little bit of a worry in the middle. And maybe they fixed that, they fixed that near Agway. And then up at Old Ferry Road, I'm not sure about what's going on up there. There's a lot of land at Old Ferry Road that could be more intensely utilized or, you know, expanded on.
Is this the last time we're going to talk about this chapter?
No, I, well, maybe, I hope so, no, we'll talk about it again. So the introduction is much the same. Landmark area profiling, the current conditions on the Landmark area profile is much the same. Brattleboro's role as a regional hub is much the same as the last time you saw it. This new section is, um, economic development and land use. And so here, just very quickly, um, basically, my concern was from a, from a drafting standpoint, I didn't want to be in a situation where somebody was grabbing this chapter as a PDF and just reading this in isolation from the rest of the plan and weren't making the connections between economic development and land use. So at the risk of being repetitive, what I've done is worked through some of the items that get treated in more detail in the land use chapter. Particularly Roger's report on commercial districts. And I think that I also make the point here that, um, again, given the relatively static population and income projections for the community, that the expectation that there'd be a significant increase in, um, retail activity in particular is, is not very realistic.
Forceful thinking.
I wouldn't go that far, it just is limited. You know, the ability for that to grow is limited. And we talk about how the Putney Road areas are proposed to be changed. I bring up the question of, um, increasing the minimum lot size to five acres in industrial district. I go over the, um, idea behind the land use changes, which is to reinvigorate, um, commercial districts, make some limited public investments, but also try and attract new private investment. At that point, the absence of a downtown master plan needs to be addressed, which we also make in other parts of the plan. Then there's a brief discussion of the relationship between infrastructure and growth and potential for growth and how infrastructure provision could be a brake on growth. Then, um, the balance between property taxes, broken up between commercial property and residential property and how the burden on residential taxpayers is growing. And then I discuss the New Market Tax Credit Program. Give a small map showing the area, uh, in question, which is not a very good map, but we're working on that. And, but the key point is that, uh, the other side of Grove Street is in. Harris Place, everything down to the river is in. And then back, basically to the, um, boundary with Guilford is in. So that's the major part on economic development and land use. And I think that it goes with the theme that is developing here, which is the thing that we can most directly affect as a planning commission is land use. And so, um, trying to shape things so that we can facilitate growth, but facilitate the kind of growth that the community wants to see and could support is the important thrust of the economic development chapter. So not have this contradict or conflict with expectations or preferences expressed in other parts of the plan. And then the last section, which is right now, um, just a series of bullet items, really looks at that question of community development. Here, the discussion needs to be much more detailed about the extent of poverty and need in Brattleboro, which is severe. So for instance, to qualify for the New Market Tax Credit Program, a rural census tract needs to have a median family income of eighty percent or less of the state median family income. The census tract that we're talking of has a six, is, its median family income is sixty-five percent of the state, which is a really big gap.
What is the median family in state?
What's that?
What is the median family income in state?
Sixty thousand, two hundred dollars, I think. So, and the median family income for this district, for the census tract, is, is just over fifty. The key point here is that this same census tract has the highest concentration of people with physical, mental disabilities, people on a fixed income, children, and elderly. It's, it's got every category of need in greater numbers than just about any other part of town. So, um, if we focus our energy on improving the New Market Tax Credit Census Tract area, which is basically most of the downtown and south of here. One unintended consequence could be a form of gentrification that isolates those people or pushes them into a different jurisdiction or takes them further away from the services that they're located here to access. And that, I think, is something that this chapter also needs to address. So I don't think this chapter should imply or want to set up expectations that we're going to change the profile of this community by dramatically changing the kinds of people who live here. I think the purpose is, is to find ways to support the people that are living here so that they can do as well as they can, um, which is a much different thing and a lot more difficult to organize. And I think that's consistent with, uh, ethos of the community more broadly. And again, goes back to questions of the priorities of the plan in other ways.
And that may not necessarily be the intention, at least applied to a place like this, of the New Market Tax Credits.
Well.
Well, I, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, it's challenging to say. I mean, if you were to use New Market Tax Credits for housing development, for instance, it has to include affordable housing. And if you're to use it for job creation, and they have to be jobs that pay at or above the minimum wage, which is hardly exciting, but it's better than nothing. And so there are controls on what you use that for.
But I mean, given, given the, the short distances involved to, from that area to another area of town, it's sort of, oh, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you. I think, you know, when you're talking about a rural community this size, you should, the whole thing should be eligible for New Market Tax Credits on the basis of having one census tract that's that rough, right? But.
And I'll never bring it up again.
No, I, and I agree with you. I, I, given that, I still think there's quite a bit of scope to reimagine parts of that neighborhood with improved housing provision and a variety of other things that could, um, certainly fuel a lot of redevelopment of the downtown. And if done sensitively, wouldn't lead to the, I'm trying to think of the right word here, but basically pushing the current residents out.
Pricing, pricing.
Pricing them out.
Them out of the market, yeah. So I promised that we would be done at eight thirty.
Good to go.
And it's past eight thirty, but, uh, so I, I'm thinking that we're gonna have one more go-round on economic development. And at our next meeting, we'll have next go-round on municipal facilities. And, uh, so I would ask everybody to please consider the, the meeting tonight with the Finance Committee. Yes, John?
I have a question.
Yeah, stand up, please. Stand and deliver.
John, I'm over to District Three. Can you hear me, is this on?
Yeah, yeah.
In the Finance Committee work of the past year, I took a special interest in alternative energy and renewables in particular. And did some study of a small German community that has succeeded in producing four times the energy, the energy that they need, electrical energy through renewable electrical generation systems, solar, wind, methane digesters, water. We have all four possibilities here. And I think that the missing ingredient that they have that we don't is a dedicated entity which is promoting renewable energy initiatives and enterprises. You recall, probably most of you have heard, that Gaz Metro in its tender offer to, uh, purchase CVPS has promised to make Rutland a solar city, a, a poster child for solar energy. They're not making promises like that to us. Uh, I think we need an entity, uh, like, something like a power authority, maybe an enterprise fund. That was Dick DeGray's suggestion, uh, that would work in this area to try to focus and make sure things get done in the areas of, uh, renewable energy. Uh, I've had a couple of meetings with Wyndham Regional Commission about this, on, uh, first with the Director and then with their Energy Committee. And I just wanted to run that by you because it represents thinking that I don't see on paper here. And maybe it's something more that we could contribute to.
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. So I would entertain. The motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.